Hammond Council for May 26 to order the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, do the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Indication.
Eternal God and Father, Lord God, we come again saying thank you, Lord God, for this day that you have made, Lord God. Lord God, we're just asking that you will continue to cover our city, Lord God, continue to cover our residents, Lord God, even in the midst of this pandemic, Lord God, even in the midst of the flood. Lord, we just thank you for all that you're still going to be doing in this season. With all these things, we do ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Time name, Roll Call.
Alexander. Alexander.
Here.
Spatelli.
Here.
Present.
Vanez.
Here.
Kelwinski. Kelwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Let the record reflect, eight present via Zoom, zero absent. Item number two, and I'm sorry, nine present via Zoom, zero absent. Next item is the mayor on, does he like to address the COVID situation or anything else?
Sure, Councilman Dave. Thank you. It's good to see you all back on Zoom. I want to update the Hammond Council on what's going on in Indiana with the COVID-19 number of positives. We have thirty-two thousand positive COVID-19 cases in the state of Indiana. Over eighteen hundred fatalities, eighteen hundred and thirty-two actually. Two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand Hoosiers have been tested. In Hammond, right here in our hometown, we have five-hundred-and-forty positive cases of COVID-19. That sixteen of our residents pass away from this dangerous disease currently. To update you on where we are with the governor's reopening plan, we are, as you all know, City Hall is open. I know we're still doing meetings by Zoom, and it's legal with the open door law in Indiana during the pandemic. But City Hall is open. We are monitoring temperatures. We are monitoring the number of people in the building. We are recommending if you're sixty-five or other over, you stay home. Most people in City Hall are wearing face masks at work. The gathering limits under the phase we're currently in is twenty-five people max. Nonessential travel is allowed in this stage we're in right now. Religious services are allowed. I went to church this weekend in Gary, actually. I know the First Baptist Church has been meeting for the past three weeks in Hammond, so religious services have resumed. Retailers are open, like retailers that were shut down during the shelter in place are open at fifty percent capacity. These are retailers like liquor stores, clothing stores, furniture stores, jewelry stores are open at fifty percent capacity. Restaurants, barber shops, beauty salons, tattoo parlors are open at fifty percent capacity. What is still closed, bars and nightclubs still closed. Gyms, community centers, like the Shepherd Center, the Sportsplex, the Senior Center, the Civic Center still closed, playgrounds, tennis courts, basketball courts, skate park, skateboard park still closed. Casinos still closed, movie theaters still closed, pools, schools and universities still closed. Right now, the governor's got us going to Stage Three on January first. What that will do is increase the capacity limits on Monday from twenty-five to one hundred. Retail and shopping will increase to seventy-five percent capacity. Gyms and fitness centers can reopen, like the Sportsplex will reopen. Community pools, playgrounds, basketball courts, outdoor, stuff like that will open in Stage Three, which is Monday. What's still closed on Monday, movie theaters, playgrounds, bars and nightclubs, cultural entertainment, sports venues, elementary and high school buildings still closed in Stage Three. Porter County, La Porte County, every county in the state of Indiana is in Stage Three except for Lake County, Cass County and Marion County. So there are some cities and towns in Northwest Indiana that have chosen to go slower. Gary, for instance, is one of them, and they're still really early in the Stage Two. So we've handled it differently in the city of Hammond. We've been open for three weeks now with, you know, relative success so far. As you all know, over the weekend, we experienced a microburst in the city of Hammond, where within fifteen minutes, we got one-point-eight inches of rain. And over the course of an hour, we had three total inches of rain. To put that in perspective, each inch of rain across our city equals about a billion gallons that we have to treat. Now, a lot of that seeps into the ground, but our plant is rated at seventy million gallons per day. And we had a billion gallons, three billion gallons dumped on us in an hour. Our stormwater detention pond could only hold so much, like fifty, sixty million gallons. And then we were bypassing the plant. You know, I hear a lot, first off, parts of our city, about two-hundred-and-fifty homes suffered basement damage so far. Parts of our city that were, suffered the most damage, Hessville, suffered a lot of damage in a lot of different areas. South Hammond, over by Schleicher in that area. Highland Munster also, I was on both sides of the bridge that day checking out what was going on on both sides. Highland Munster experienced a lot of damage in that area as well. Schleicher, the streets were, the water was going up to people's front doors in Schleicher. And then over in the Seventy-four Hundred Block of Alabama, real bad, four feet deep, we lost a police car going down the street, on that street. So obviously, a lot of parts of our city affected, hundreds of homes suffered damage. That's obviously horrible. I hear a lot during incidents like this that the floodgates were closed, the operator was sleeping, the valve wasn't open. I just want to put this to rest, that is not the case. Our system is highly automated. It reacts when rainfall hits it, and no municipal stormwater system can handle the amount of water we had dumped on us at one time. It'd be like taking fifty gallons and trying to dump it instantaneously down your kitchen sink. It just, it would get backed up and overflow, which is what happened to us as well. We had all the water hit us at once. But anyway, I want to point out that obviously, we had a lot of residents calling us today at City Hall. Obviously, we've been talking a lot about this. I do want to thank the hard-working men and women of the Hammond Sanitary District. You know, in the plant itself and in the field, Jack's crews and sewer maintenance were out twenty-four hours straight-ish. Basically Saturday night to Sunday. Gary's crew had a full call-out. We had multiple emergencies happening. Flooded cars, trees down, homes damaged, garbage getting piled everywhere. It was a full night's work for Department of Public Works and for the sewer maintenance crew. We've had a few days to, you know, contemplate what happened, and I think it's time for the Hammond Sanitary District to step up and try to offer some type of relief to the homes that were affected. So we're in the process of announcing a rebate process through the Hammond Sanitary District, where each home that suffered damage, right now, we have one-hundred-and-ninety-eight homes listed as suffering damage, and we have another sixty or so awaiting inspection. And each home that can be verified as suffering flood damage this week, from this weekend's storms, will get a five-hundred-dollar rebate from the Hammond Sanitary District to apply towards, you know, the damage that they suffered. Some of them had damage to their cars. Some of them lost thousands of dollars in furniture and personable memories and stuff like that, and those can't be replaced. But I think it's important for the city of Hammond and Hammond Sanitary District to step forward to help try to mitigate the damage suffered by two-hundred-and-fifty of our homes, which is, you know, which is significant. So I know we've been working in coordination with the Hammond Sanitary District today to come up with the, you know, how this system's going to operate. More information will be coming on this real quickly. Let me just read this real quick. City Hammond will be offering qualifying homeowner, homeowner storm relief of up to five-hundred dollars per home to help cover damage from Saturday's extreme weather event. An application will be made available through the Community Development Department beginning Wednesday. Checks should be able to be issued seven to fourteen days after it's verified that you suffered storm damage. Homeowners must have an inspection by either the Hammond Sanitary District or the Inspections Department to verify damage to their home due to the storm. Homeowners must either have a homestead exemption with the county or otherwise shows proof of homeownership and residence at the damaged house. This five-hundred dollars is to be used for damage to the home, including carpeting, personal items, furnaces, hot water heaters, drywall and the like. It cannot be used for painting. You know, in many cases, the damage suffered by the homeowners is going to far exceed the five-hundred dollars that we're offering. I think it's a gesture of goodwill. We know that there's nothing that could have been done to change what happened when three billion gallons of water hits us within the period of an hour. But I think this system rebating five-hundred dollars for damage suffered by our customers is a good first step. And I appreciate Marty Wilgus and the Hammond Sanitary District for stepping forward and, you know, offering to fund this program. So I didn't know if you had any other questions, Councilman Warple, if any other councilmen have questions, but that's my report for the week. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak.
Does anybody have any question for the mayor? Are there any questions for the mayor?
Yeah. Mayor, how do, how do homeowners go about informing the city that they sustained damage? Is that through calling the Hammer Store Department directly? Is that through 301? What are the ways that they can notify us and then set up that inspection?
Thank you, Councilman Tyler. Hammond, you could call my office. First off, we need to get you on the list. Eight-five-three-six-three-oh-two is Hammond Mayor's office. We took hundreds of phone calls today. But I know that number off the top of my head, eight-five-three-six-three-oh-two, will get you into the mayor's office and will connect you up with the right line off the top of my head. I'm not sure. But this program's being run out of the Hammond Sanitary District. The claims will be verified through either the Inspections Department or the Sewer Maintenance Crews. And once you're verified that you received storm damage from the last storm, you'll literally get a five-hundred-dollar check within fourteen business days after the verification happens. So, but worst-case scenario, call my office tomorrow, Barry. Hopefully, we can get you some more information during the council meeting, but that's my answer for right now. I'm not sure if Phil or anybody else could help me out with that. Phil, could you jump in real quick?
Sure. Yeah, no, Mayor, you're correct. I believe the number is eight-five-three-six-four-one-three for sanitary. And I think they said extension five-one-four is what they're going to want to hit to fill out.
Are you sure on that? Do you think or you're positive?
I actually, if you give me a couple of minutes, I can run and go grab the press release. I'll be right back.
Thank you. Okay. We'll get to that in a second, Barry. Does anybody else have any questions on this program or on our COVID response, anything?
Yes, Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
The question is, so we know that some residents have already started to do their cleanup process. If they are providing like maybe pictures or video, would that also help them in being able to secure those dollars?
Absolutely, Councilwoman. Thank you for asking that. Pictures, video, everybody takes pictures of storm damage. So pictures of the storm damage, video, and our crews could go in there. If it's completely fixed up, I mean, I still, I'm sure that, this has only been a couple of days. I doubt too many of them are already completely fixed up again. But the guys, the workers at the Hammond Sanitary Sewer Crew will simply walk in, see the watermarks, realize that it's a legitimate claim and follow through. But pictures certainly helps, video certainly helps. The homeowner has to build a case, but it's not like a high burden. We know the areas that experienced flooding. So if you're in that area and you can prove that you have flooding in your basement from this event, you qualify for the program, Councilwoman.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Councilman?
The gentleman who went to get the number and extension, could he also actually make that call and do the extension? In the past, it's been difficult to navigate sanitaries lines and get through to people. If he could do that for everybody before they start calling to make sure that that's intact and correct, that'd be appreciated.
Appreciate that, Councilman Kelwinski. Phil, could you, could you make sure before we announce that number that it's, I could tell you for fact, eight-five-three-six-three-oh-two, Councilman Mark, but obviously, I'd rather have the phone call to the department that's handling it. Phil, do you have the number?
I do. It is eight-five-three-six-four-one-three and an extension five-one-five is what they want them to hit to actually fill out the application.
Say that one more time, please.
It's two-one-nine-eight-five-three-six-four-one-three and the extension is five-one-five.
Can somebody make that call now?
Applications will be, the application will be up and running and available on Thursday. We're finalizing the application. The program itself is, the details are already out there, but the application itself will be available for Thursday. However, anybody that calls the mayor's office that has been letting us know that they've had damage, we are directing them to the sanitary department. They will do an inspection now, so that by the time the person fills out the application, they'll already have had the inspection done and it'll, you know, officially move them through the process.
And this going back to Katrina's question from earlier, we know where the basement backups happen. We have these maps, the scatter maps that show you where the backups occur, and we use it for, after you have a flooding event, you could sort of see which parts of the system struggled with this storm. And if, let's say, for instance, there was a homeowner that wasn't from an area where we had a lot of basement backups, we may be more skeptical in an area like that if they didn't have pictures. But if you were in an area where everybody backed up, you know, it's obviously a lot easier to prove that case, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Councilman?
Yes. Would that also apply to businesses? Can you hear me?
No. Right now, Councilman, it's only for homeowners.
Okay.
We're using HUD money as part of, if they live in a low-income area, HUD is actually going to be able to pay for this emergency repairs. But right now, it's not for Hammond businesses. It's for Hammond homeowners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman.
This is Pete Torres. Is, other than the five-hundred dollars that the city is offering through the sanitary district, is there any other, do you know of any other program? FEMA, is FEMA my help or just state? Can help with anything that we can help and that the city can help in the processing of applications or anything?
We've, you know, the governor for FEMA to get involved has to declare a state of emergency, and I've heard that there's no consideration at all to a state of emergency for the city of Hammond. If he declares it a state of emergency, then FEMA could get involved and open up the doors. But I haven't heard any mention by the governor about a state of emergency, Councilman. I know the township's offering like cleanup supplies, which is nice, so I know that's available as well. I think it was like thirty dollars worth of relief, and I know it's not a lot, but every bit helps. But, and I realize even five-hundred dollars is not a lot if you lost ten-thousand dollars worth of stuff in your basement. It's just, we're trying to help. And at the same time, you know, if two-hundred-and-fifty people participate in this, that's a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for the city of Hammond, you know, and the Hammond Sanitary District, excuse me. So there's, you know.
Thank you. I personally, I got a call from a lady on Sherman Street. At last, her furnace of over five thousand bucks or in that area. So it's people like that with a good sum of money. She's trying to find, right now, she has no way to replace it, but just wondering about losses like that that run into the thousands.
Yeah. Sherman Street was the worst affected street in the city of Hammond. In fact, a day later, they still had feet on the street, a couple of feet of water on the street. And it's, as you and I both know, Councilman, it's an extremely poor area. The residents that live there struggle, and to have this burden placed on them. If there's anything we could do in an extreme low, low to moderate income area like that area, it would be through HUD. So that would probably be in addition to this program, Councilman. I would recommend if you have situations like this, why don't you approach us separately with this person's name, and maybe there's something we could do if they qualify financially. You know, HUD is able to help in extreme cases, but the citizens that receive the help have to be financially able to receive the help. So Sherman Street was horrible, Councilman, I agree. What happened there was they're so close to the plant, they sort of got penalized. It's a, I learned a lot about this. A hydraulic lock, all the water that's going across our city to go to the plant, and here we are, one of the neighborhoods closest to the plant, Sherman Street, couldn't get their water in the high-pressure system until everything went by. And they sat there for a day with water on their street, and it was unacceptable. But it was a bad storm, Councilman, and it's a helpless feeling as a mayor to watch your city go underwater.
Yes, thank you. I'll give her that information and call your office.
Thank you, Councilman. And extreme cases like that, with extreme poverty, in a situation like that, I think it's more a case-by-case basis, Councilman, and we'll go to, you know, I think Awana would be a good person to loop in there, Councilman Torres. Awana Miller, she has a lot of latitude on a case-by-case basis, but for the five-hundred-dollar program that applies across the city, you know, we can't really delve into the specific cases like that. So thank you, Councilman Torres.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for the mayor?
Yes.
Was that Councilman Kelwinski?
Thank you. Mayor, I just called the sanitary district line, eight-five-three-six-four-one-three, and you get after hours. And you press one if you've had a back sewage backup or manhole cover missing. And you leave your name, your phone and your address, and the answering service will call somebody on call that should get back to you. If you call during working hours, the extension five-fifteen is to Katie Sherman, but I couldn't do anything with that after hours.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
The public to know how to go about that.
And Councilman Mark, they can't go wrong by calling my office either. So if you're having trouble, call my office. I'd rather have a cleaner route to get through the sanitary district to prevent overload in my office, but worst-case scenario, eight-five-three-six-three-oh-two gets you to my office and we'll transfer you where you need to be. So thank you for doing that, Councilman.
All right. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Councilman Emerson?
I had the opportunity to ride around the fourth district today, and I drifted into Hessville a little bit. The parts of the fourth were hit, you know, pretty hard, but I saw no debris on either, in any of the alleys I looked at. I got off the beaten path a little bit and looked around Schleicher, and I saw no debris that people would take out of their basements or whatever. So the street department should really get, and I drifted into Hessville, looked up and down a few of the side streets, and I didn't see anything out there. So the street department should get some kudos for really picking up. I don't know if they worked all weekend or not, but I couldn't find any stacked up, you know, dressers and carpet and all those things.
Thank you, Councilman Emerson. I worked Schleicher during the flood. That's where I was stationed for a few hours, stopping traffic from going through the neighborhood because the water was so high on the street that the cars would go by and the waves would hit the houses. And so I was working with the Hammond Police Department, and we were just blocking all traffic from going through the neighborhood just so our system could catch up. And once the water level started going down, we allowed traffic back through. But we were spared in Schleicher because most of those homes are on a slab. And if they were in basements, we would have lost thousands of homes, hundreds of homes in the Schleicher area's basement. So we got lucky that Schleicher is mostly slab homes, but the street flooding was tremendous in the Schleicher area. And then I got called to the Seventy-four Hundred Block, Alabama, which is right by the ice skating rink, and it was the deepest water I've seen in the city. Like I said, there was a Hammond police car that we lost. It tried to go through Alabama Street, and it got stuck right in the middle of a four-foot swamp. So I spent the rest of my night there, but I was in the fourth most of the flood, helping the Hammond Police Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for the mayor?
Mr. President, I did want to clarify the phone number for sewer backups is, you can call the main number during office hours, but the sewer department's number is eight-five-three-six-four-zero-five, extension six-three-seven. After hours, it will forward also to the on-call person, and they are taking down numbers and trying to return the phone calls this evening. Sewer Department Jackson, they're working till eight o'clock tonight.
So Rachel, you said, so right now, you want people to call two-one-nine-eight-five-three-six-four-zero-five?
Extension six-three-seven. And what we've done is we have them roll all the lines to all the phones in the sewer department, and we've taken our administrative staff back to sewer department, and we've got about four of us manning the phones throughout the day. We had a board meeting today, so we had to cut out early, but tomorrow, we'll be there all day as long as it takes. And so we were taking the calls or we're verifying things. People are calling to see, you know, how soon they're going to be serviced, and we can get Jack or one of the guys to get on the radio and see, see who has their, but they had hundreds and hundreds of stacks of papers today that they went through.
Thank you, Rachel. And each home has to be inspected, so to be participating in this program, you need to get through the sewers, you know, sewer maintenance department, you know, get yourself lined up for an inspection, and then once you do that, it's verified. It's an easy process.
I've also asked the people that I spoke to on the phone, because some of them cleaned it up, they had pictures. So I said, show the inspectors the pictures, the videos, anything you have, things that you threw out. Take them to the back, show them what you threw out, so it shows the water damage. And most people did. Most people took pictures and had that type of information.
I think that's a natural thing if you're flooding, is to take pictures of the damage. So I imagine we have pictures. Any other questions, Mr. President?
Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I have a few, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor Tyler?
I've been monitoring the questions on Facebook, and one of the first questions is, what about renters? And I'm guessing they should go through their landlords to apply for.
Exactly, exactly, Barry. Go through your landlord. Hopefully, you have renters insurance. But yeah, this is a super expensive program, obviously, and it's geared towards homeowners. And I realize that there are renters out there that are going to be frustrated to hear that, but this is an expensive program, and we're trying to, you know, obviously, if you're a homeowner, you've invested in our city. You're like a stockholder in the city, and we're trying to take care of our bosses. So, but I apologize to the renters. It would be cost prohibitive to include everybody. And hopefully, there's renters insurance, or hopefully, there's some type of insurance policy the landlord could provide in a situation like this.
My next question is, what about visitors? So let's say a family member was visiting, a homeowner, do they go about, or what are their options?
Good question. So like, let's say you parked a car on the street, and then the street flooded, and you suffered damage. I'd file a claim the same way other people do. Barry, I would file a claim through the sanitary district, and we'll have to evaluate it, so. But by the way, like, you know, keep in mind, this is an act of God. You know, we're not liable legally for what happened. We're like, we had three billion gallons of water dumped on us. This is a program for us to show goodwill towards our homeowners. But legal, like, we're not, as a city, liable legally because of what happened. You know, it's an act of God. You get three inches of rain in one hour, you know, there's no place to put that water.
And then, sorry, my next question is, I know a lot of homes have already been inspected. Do they need to go through the inspection process again, or are they already on file?
If they've been inspected, they're going to be on the list. I would just make sure, you know, talk to, you know, I would make sure, reach out to Rachel, reach out to somebody at the district to make sure that, by calling these numbers, make sure you're on the list. And if you've been inspected, you don't need to be inspected twice. And we have already inspected a number of homes, by the way. So a lot of these people have already been taken care of.
Yeah, we've already inspected about a hundred-and-seventy homes.
Oh, I didn't even know you were there, Marty. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilman Kelwinski?
So I just want to be clear about the phone number. So is it day or night you call eight-five-three-six-four-zero-five?
Marty?
Yes, that is correct.
Extension six-three-seven, so that's the only number and extension we need to know right now.
That's for nighttime. The daytime, we have the phones manned with four extra people all day long.
And that's eight-five-three-six-four-one-three?
Six-four-zero-five. It's manned with people during the day. It's made to roll over to the on-call person after hours. But they are, yeah, they're going to do the same thing that we did, which was take down the Hammond homeowners' information. They may have to leave a message. They call them back that evening.
So that's the phone number day and night, Councilman Mark? Eight-five-three-six-four-zero-five.
But, Councilman, this is Phil. I just want to make sure we're, we're understanding, to clarify, when you want to fill out the application for the program, that's where you're going to use the other number, which is the two-one-nine-eight-five-three-six-four-one-three, extension five-one-five. So we're talking about two different things. Right now, if you just want to report that you have damage, Right now, if you just want to report that you have damage and you want the inspection done, that's when you'll use the other number.
Perfect. I appreciate that. And by the way, I just had a phone call from the sanitary district after I placed my message during the meeting. So they were responding already, the on-call person. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Any further questions?
I have one more. I, as I was out and about, driving around the 3rd district, speaking, it seemed like the majority of residents in that area had some type of flood damage too. And one of the big questions, I kept getting, and it seems like a lot of people are asking us on Facebook, is there any plan to update our sewer system? So I know, Mayor, you've talked about that on Facebook a bit and how the storm that we received was just too large for our system to accommodate in general. I know Marty might have some thoughts too. But can you all clear up just one more time, the, I guess like the severity of the storm that we received and how we just overloaded the system? But at the same time, talk a little bit about, I know that you guys have been in talks about exploring upgrades to our system and where we might be with that too.
We're working with the U.S. EPA and they want us to do $250 million of improvements over the next 15 years, which is, I mean, even after doing the $250 million worth of improvements over the next 15 years, if we got the same type of storm we had on Saturday where we get three inches of rain dumped on us at one time, we still would overflow. But keep in mind that our plant is rated for 70 million gallons a day. We also have storage capacity for probably 50 million gallons right across the street. And we were overflowing in our plant, meaning we were on bypass. We were just flowing water right into the river, which is reportable violation with the EPA. But we were doing that because if we're holding the water back, that water's got to go someplace and it'll end up in all of our basements. So we were doing everything we can to bypass the plant and put the water right into the river. But, you know, we are going to be doing major upgrades to our plant over the next 15 years. And it's going to be needed because this isn't, you know, we've been reading in our newspapers about Lake Michigan is pounding the shorelines right now. The lake levels are at an all-time high and the storms are so bad, it's causing major damage. Wildfire season is growing longer and hotter in California and on the West Coast. Hurricane season's getting longer and more violent along the Gulf Coast and the East Coast. I mean, these storms are, this is life in the 2020s. I mean, this is global warming, in my opinion, and we need to start getting ready. And that means that, you know, when we're doing these improvements to the plant, it costs a lot of money. And, but we have to keep on upgrading and making that plant stronger and stronger. And that means the money's got to come from someplace. And that's the hard part is, you know, to upgrade that plant costs tens of millions of dollars or hundreds of millions of dollars. And that's, that's got to be paid by our ratepayers, which is all of us. And that's the hard part is, you know, but no matter what, how big our plant was, that storm Saturday would have wiped out almost any plant. It was the worst-case scenario. We were already saturated with rain and we got drenched with 3 billion gallons in one hour. It was a horrible situation. And I thought to the resident, I feel like when that happens, I feel like I'm letting you down as a mayor, but there's nothing we could have done. All I could do is get in my car and try to help the police department control traffic and try to prevent further damage. But, and I know all of us were doing our thing. I saw a lot of you going out buying cleaning supplies. A lot of you I saw in your cars and you saw me. We're out there doing, but a gas station fell down because of the wind and the rain. I mean, there was nothing we could have done. That storm was intense and hard. Marty, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, I'm sorry, Mayor. I just, I mean, you're exactly right. The intensity in such a short period of time, you're right. We could have had sewers twice the size. It would have made no difference. But the other key thing is, we are doing, we are pumping at 1.300 million gallons into the river. 300 million gallons. It's unprecedented. It really is.
Marty, if you didn't do that, that water ends up in our basements and our streets, all over the place, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
As a result, I'm sorry, Councilman Mark.
Marty, how many events per year does the EPA allow into the river?
Well, we've been negotiating that and we're going back and forth on either three or four a year.
And the last few years, what's it looked like? How many events have we had in the last, say, three years per year?
Actually, we've been really lucky. This year has been a tough year so far. But in previous years, we were under those events, under the 4. So, and I keep telling EPA, you never know when these storms come. You never know how much rain it's going to dump. And the storms have become more tropical. We've been talking about this for at least the last five years, especially here in Hammond. We don't get the same rains like we used to get. We used to get rains that would drizzle all day across the entire city. Now we get these very heavy concentrated downfalls in only small portions of the city. North Hammond, your area, Councilman, got less than an inch. It's hard to believe, less than an inch, and you're how many miles away from South Hammond? It's just crazy.
I have, Marty, they had no idea it didn't rain that day.
Even today, when I was talking to Dan Spitali, it was pouring here in North Hammond and he had the sun shining. But Marty, if we keep it under three violations a year, are they considered violations then? Or are they just sort of tossed out?
No, they're considered legal. So they're not violations.
All right. Thank you.
But we still have to report every time we dump right into the river, right, Marty?
That is correct, yes.
Right.
And not only do we have to report that, Mayor, I have to report every inspection, every house, every address to them also.
Right. But if we don't bypass the plant in that situation, the damage is so much worse. I mean, we had no choice. To save homes, we're literally like bypassing the plant and putting straight water that's not treated into the Grand Cal.
And I had myself and all of my management staff out, Mayor, with our crews. I was talking to the people that night, as you know, you and I were on the phone, just so they knew we were trying to do everything that we can.
I know.
Marty, I want to congratulate you and your employees on the job you've done up till now. We had no flooding in the basements, my understanding. We've had some pretty bad floods in the past, but things have been corrected a lot. Take my hat off to you, because I know I talked to you a few times. And you said no basements had flooded with some of the high rains that we had prior to this.
Well, you can just ask the mayor's father. He would tell you every time it rained in the city of Hammond, he cringed. The rain like this, Mayor, right, the rain like this back in the day, if your dad was still around here as mayor, we would have had over 2,000 calls at least.
I know it doesn't make anybody feel better, that's true. But if you've got a flooded basement and thousands of dollars of damage, you don't want to hear this. But I know, I mean, that's why we wanted to make this program available. It's a gesture of goodwill from us. We're not legally obligated to do this. There's nothing we could have done as a city to prevent what happened. We're doing it because the Hammond Sanitary District and the city of Hammond feel like it's our gesture of goodwill to our residents that we care about you. We appreciate your investment in our city. And, you know, we want to help in this tough times. It's not bad enough that we're going through a pandemic. It's not bad enough that 10,000 Hammond residents are out of a job. And then we get floods and basement backups on top of that. It's just, I apologize on behalf of the city and on behalf of the Hammond Sanitary District. We're working all the time to try to prevent this type of thing from happening. And we're going to keep working and try to dissect what happened so we can prevent it in the future. So is there any other questions from the council?
Yes, just for clarity, say, for the people that are watching, the number that we are calling is 853-6405, extension 637. Is that Rachel? And Marty, is that? Yes.
Yep.
And Mr. President, I have one more question. Mr. Mayor, can you explain how this program is different than the standpipe program as well?
Thank you. The standpipe program is something that people should learn more about while we're going through this process. And I appreciate you bringing that up, Barry. The standpipe is a, it's like a check valve that, you know, they call it a standpipe. In the Navy, we called it a check valve. But it's a protection that you basically screw it into your basement that allows water to leave your basement but doesn't allow water to back up into your basement. The Hammond Sanitary District has a program that Marty will talk about in a second that helps cover the cost of that check valve. And this is a proven preventer, it's proven to prevent these types of basement backups from occurring. I know, Marty, you have one of those check valves in your basement, right?
I do not, because I have overhead sewers. And with people who have overhead sewers, because my house is newer, I was always told and under the belief you would never have basement backup. But as I had told you, Mayor, I got backup even though I had overhead sewers because that was how strong the intensity of the storm was. But the program that we offer at the district is our backflow preventer. And it hooks onto the main sewer line lateral as it leaves the house going out to the street. It's a one-way valve flapper. So it allows sewage to go through towards the street. And the flapper closes as in a big rainstorm to stop that from coming back in your house. That usually averages, depending on the kind of house you have, and if you're either installing it in the basement in the concrete or outside in the lawn in the front yard, that cost is anywhere from $2,000 to $3,000. We will pay up to $1,000 reimbursement after you have had a licensed Hammond contractor come and install it. And for whatever reason, I've had this program available for many, many years. I'm hoping people take more advantage this time around.
And you don't have to have a flood event to qualify for that, do you?
Well, no, you do. You do have to have a flood event that we have, that Jack has gone out with his staff.
So Marty, if I wanted to put one in my basement as a preventative measure, I couldn't do that? I have to flood before I could do it?
That's not the way they wrote that, no.
That doesn't seem, all right, maybe we could work on that, Councilman Mark. Like for preventative reasons. If somebody, like, you learned your lesson because your neighbors lost our basement and you want to prevent that from happening to you, I think that they should be able to participate in that program as well.
Is there anybody else with any questions or comments?
I would just like to add that, Mayor, you spoke about the hydraulic lock. And I want to commend staff for giving me a tour of how everything works during the event and everything. And I literally seen that hydraulic rock. And it's the equivalent of waiting on a train, water waiting on a train that's going 500 to 1,000 miles an hour. And you don't realize it, you just think it's water, it's all water. But when it's moving that fast, it blocks other water from entering the system. And, you know, I read a lot of the comments on social media and I even saw you out there. I saw Councilman Rakos, another councilman out there. And trust me, what I saw was every department head working hard that night and kind of had a hopeless, or helpless feeling on their faces with everything that was going on. But I commend the city for their response. And if anybody doesn't have anything else, we can move back to the agenda with the reading of the minutes.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali.
Make the motions, accept the minutes for May 11, 2020, and be placed on file, please.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by? Seconded by Councilman Torres to approve the minutes and placed on file. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number four, approve all claims.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I'd like to make motion, approve claims dated May 6, 2020 through May 20, 2020. Claim number 2256 through 2544, the amount of $5,208,454.37.
Second.
Motion's been made to accept the claims as written by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres, or Councilman Kowinski.
I wonder, do we still have the money to pay claims? Or have we had to do anything extraordinary regarding the payment of claims?
Mr. President, I can answer that if you need.
Mayor?
I appreciate Councilman Kowinski's question about cash flow. Obviously, we anticipated having property tax revenue by now, which makes life easier. We do have current cash flow to get through a little bit while, a little while longer. But we do get a tax draw shortly that's going to help our cash flow situation. But obviously, the cash flow's getting tight because we're not getting the revenue we anticipated. So we are good for this period. I know that Megan has pushed out most bills. I think we're at 60 days now, Councilman Mark, which helps us cash flow-wise. But we're getting close to the time where, once we get our tax draw, we're going to have to talk to the council about strategies to get us through 2020. I think we're going to be fine at the end of the day. I see the economy starting back up again and signs of life are coming back. But I appreciate Councilman Mark's question about cash flow because we're constantly talking about it. But we are fine right now. We have pushed out our bills to 60 days to help with that situation. But thank you for the question, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, just to clarify, even though the taxes were pushed out, we still get, like, there is a tax draw coming on the people that pay their taxes by escrow, right?
Yes, sir. Exactly. I paid my taxes. I'm sure some people did through escrow. So we will get, we're being told our May draw that got pushed back to July will be a decent draw. More, it'll be closer to what we anticipated than the second and the third draw of 2020. That's where we're going to really, hopefully not, but that's where we're really scared. So we'll probably have to talk about some type of tax anticipation warrant, which we haven't had to do in the city of Hammond in a long time. But we'll probably have to talk about that in the second half of this year. But we have enough cash flow for right now. And then we'll be in communication, obviously, with the nine council members, come up with a strategy to get us through 2020. So thank you for the question, Councilman.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Carmen Roca?
Sorry. Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kowinski?
Yes.
Oras?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Mr. President?
Mayor?
I just got a text from our controller to update Councilman Mark on his question. We did get, we're getting our tax, our first tax draw this week. We're getting $3.4 million, which is, quick math, about 40% lower than we anticipated. So we're getting $3.4 million for our early draw sometime this week. But that's $2 million lower than last year's May collection. So, no, obviously, not everybody paid their taxes. We should see, hopefully, the other 40% or close to it coming. July is the deadline, so probably in August. And then we have our next collection, our next tax draw after that. But we are going to start running into cash flow issues that Councilman Kowinski talked about shortly.
Thank you. Item number five, public hearings, there are none. Item number six, communications. Communications. Does anybody have any communications? Communications is now closed. Item number seven, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes. As everyone knows, the community and crime watch groups have not been meeting over the past several weeks. And we thought it would be a good idea to reach out to our residents, see if there are any concerns that they might have. So the Citywide Crime Watch will be hosting a virtual crime watch meeting tomorrow night, which is Wednesday, May 27, at 5:00 p.m., right here on Go Hammond Facebook. And I hope everybody joins in because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Item number eight, ordinances, third and final passage, there are none. Item number nine, introduction of ordinances. Carmen? Carmen?
You're muted, Carmen.
Sorry. 2009, an ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the CARES Act and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditures of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act CARES Act program. Act Program.
Sponsored by Councilman Spitali.
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali.
We're going to make a motion to move through first and second readings, refer to the council as a whole. Meeting set up for Ju- June 22nd, 2020 at 5:30 and a public hearing set for June 22nd, 2020.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Tyler, our motion was made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Tyler for a first and second reading and council as a whole on June 22nd with a public hearing on June 22nd, 2020. Do you have a time for that? June 22nd, Councilman Spitali?
5:30.
5:30?
Yes.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali.
If the council has any questions, Ann Anderson and Owana Miller is in the audience out there to answer any questions you might have on this ordinance of 20-09.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. President?
Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you. The, the amount of this money is, do I understand it to be about 1.8 million?
The city of Hammond is receiving CDBG funds directly sent to us due to coronavirus relief at a price of 1.25 million.
And that's the total amount for the city of Hammond?
Yep, and it is going to be dispersed into different programs and funds that need assistance.
And the pro- what programs are you referring to, like city-run programs?
The one that I can speak of tonight is a small business resiliency program that we have set up with some of the funds in order to give small business in Hammond some assistance due to the Corona pandemic.
And the amount allocated to that portion is how much again?
It's a little under 1 million, about 900,000. Councilman?
Yes?
This is Owana, I'm sorry, I wanted to, I had to mute myself. I wanted to give you a little bit more information. These are funds that were additional appropriation from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. These funds are to bridge a shortfall for our citizens and businesses here in Hammond during the coronavirus pandemic. The amount of CDBG funds, which is Community Development Block Grant, is 1.25799. And then the Emergency Solutions Grant will be receiving 635,393 dollars. These funds are to be used for public services, economic development, as well as our homeless shelters. The ordinance is to appropriate the funds based off of the packet that everyone should have received last week.
So if I can clarify just for myself, there's one amount for small business at 900,000, another amount from CDBG for 1.257, and an Energy Solutions for 635,000 plus, is that correct?
Okay, so the Community Development Block Grant, that's the money we'll be receiving, 1.2 million dollars.
Okay.
Of those funds, we're recommending that a portion, 17,000, go to mental health to expand those services, Hammond Legal Aid, We Care From The Heart, Meals On Wheels, and then a big chunk of it is going to Economic Development for their new program to help the business, the small businesses here in the city of Hammond.
So me- mental health, legal aid, economic development, and what were the other ones? Meals On Wheels and one more?
We Care From The Heart.
What is that?
We Care From The Heart is a senior service program. That's where they go into individual homes and assist the disabled individuals resident.
Who runs that and where are they out of?
They're out of downtown Hammond. Kim Huck is the executive director.
Okay. Thanks.
And then the ESG dollars is the 635,000 and that we have for First Baptist Church, who runs the rescue mission, Claude Street Shelter, Continuum of Care, Greater Hammond. And that's where you got the total of the 1.892492 dollar amount.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made to put- Councilman, Mr. Emerson?
I have a, I have a question within the, within the 2009. The, one of the applicants is Continuum, Continuum of Care Network out of Gary, Indiana?
Yes. The Continuum of Care is an umbrella over all of the shelters in Lake County. It's actually called District 1A. So they're over our shelters here in the city of Hammond. They just happen to be located in Gary. And they'll assist with the case management, homeless prevention operations and administration.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Councilman Kowinski?
Thank you. For Owana, then, when the money is allocated, who decides where the money goes? And who decides how much goes to what particular business or entity that you're dispensing monies to?
When it comes down to the business program, I'll let Ann Anderson chime in on that because that comes out of her department.
Thank you.
So tomorrow, we will start receiving online applications from businesses. The criteria is they have to be a for-profit, independently owned business within the city of Hammond with 50 or less employees. Along with the application, they have to submit a profit-loss statement from the beginning of this year to date to show a decrease in profit. And they will also be submitting some financial documents to back that up. And then, once we receive all that information, we'll be going through each application and deciding on their need, up to $10,000.
And did, did business already get applications or do they have to find the application online somewhere? How's that handled?
We put in a press release last week, it will be available online, the Go Hammond website tomorrow, tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
And we've been fielding many, many calls for the past four days in our office on this, so we're ready for them.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion? Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali and seconded by Councilman Tyler for first and second reading. Council as a whole on June 20th, 2020 at 5:30 PM and a public hearing on June 20th, 2020. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. President?
Councilman Kowinski?
Yes. Just to clarify, I think you said the public hearing was June 20th, but it's on paper here as June 22nd.
Yeah, I, I must have read that wrong. I got two dogs driving me crazy right now and I was staring at them, but it is June 22nd, 2020.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That concludes introduction of ordinances. Item number 10, resolutions. Carmen?
20R09, a resolution recognizing and honoring Roosevelt Moore Jr. for his contributions as an educator and coach with the school city of Hammond.
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler?
Just to give some clarification, as Carmen stated, this is a resolution honoring Roosevelt Moore Jr., who was a lifelong Hammond resident.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but we have to have a motion to introduce it.
Sorry, I apologize. I make a motion to, to introduce resolution number R09.
I'm sorry. The motion's been made by Councilman Tyler, seconded by- Councilwoman Alexander for, to pass resolution R20R09. Is there any discussion now, Councilman Tyler?
Yeah. Mr. President, thank you. As I was saying, this is a resolution honoring Roosevelt Moore Jr. for his contributions as a coach and educator. Started off at Morton High School and has been at Hammond High School for the pla- the past 10-plus years. Was an assistant coach first for football and then became the head football coach and recently resigned. He and his family are getting ready to move out of the area. And so before he, he makes that move to down to Florida, I wanted to honor him for all the work he's done for the school city of Hammond in general, but specifically at Morton High School and Hammond High School. As I said before, he's a 2001 graduate of Hammond High and has mentored, has educated, has assisted hundreds of students coming through those two high schools. And so if possible, I would like to suspend the, the regular meeting to allow Roosevelt, who's on a Zoom, to say a few words.
Motion's been made to allow Mr. Moore to speak as-
Second.
Is there any, and motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Mark?
Uh, how you doing, council? Uh, I would just like to say I appreciate the award. It's not really what I was looking for when I got into it. I'm from Hammond, went to Hammond High. When I came back, I really wanted to help out and give back to the youth as much as I can and do coaching and teaching was my best opportunity to do that. And I'm really humbled by the experience and helping young men reach their full potential and, uh, I couldn't do it without some of the great guys that came from Hammond, like Coach Tyler, David Moore, Keith Herring, Athletic Director Larry Moore Jr. We had Officer Sean Garrison helping us, so it was a lot of Hammond guys showing Hammond students what they be, could become, so I really appreciate this honor and thank you guys.
Thank you.
Well deserved.
Any further discussion? Councilman Spitali?
They do a great job, Mr. Moore's done a great job for Hammond High and wish him the best.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Alexander?
Just want to congratulate Roosevelt on taking and embarking on a new journey, but also for his dedication to the youth of our city. So thank you Roosevelt for everything that you've done. We do appreciate it.
That goes for the entire city. Nice going, well deserved. Enjoy your Florida adventure.
Thanks a lot, brother.
If you retire, you're going to love it, so.
Good job.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just want to say one more thing, if I can. It's, it's been a pleasure working with Roosevelt and learning a lot from him over these past 14 years, as I've served as an assistant coach at Hammond High as well. And one of the, the most important things I learned from him was that it wasn't always about X's and O's or winning football games. He really tried to make sure that our, the young men that we were coaching knew their full potential and, and rose to that. And so I have a few testimonials that I'll add to the minutes to reflect some thoughts from some of the players that, that he's coached and the impact that he's made on their lives. And Roosevelt, I'll make sure that you get a couple of copies of, of those as well. But I know we, you sent, like I said, several players on to play college football, but more importantly, they've, they've gone on to become great men and great leaders back in the Hammond community. So I think that's a testament to your leadership, to your vision, and nothing but well wishes and success to you and your family down in Florida. So thanks again.
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Carmen Rokoff?
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vinesz?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres? Torres?
He's muted.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes. Is Councilman Torres back? Motion carries eight in favor, zero opposed with one absent.
Councilman Warple?
Yes.
I apologize, I apologize, I got to leave early. I apologize to everybody, it was great to see everybody, thank you very much and I'll see you at the next council meeting or before then. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution B, or item B?
Ready, 20R10, resolution of the City Council of the city of Hammond, authorizing the filing of the CARES Act application and designating signatory for payment voucher on letters of credit for the CARES Act programs.
Sponsored, but sponsored by Councilman Spitali.
Mr. President, before we get into final passage, I have an amendment, make an amendment-
You got to make the motion to pass it before we put the amendment in.
I make a motion to final, final passage for the 20R10.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption of 20R10, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Emerson, I believe. Okay. Councilman Spitali?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend on paragraph four, which is page two, change the name from Megan Garner to Megan Flores, please.
Motion's been made to amend 20R10, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, a motion's been made by Councilman Spitali to amend in the language of 20R10, seconded by Councilman Tyler, is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali?
I'd like to have Carmen read the entire resolution, please.
Whereas on March 27th, 2020, President Donald Trump signed into law the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Securities Act. The 2.8 trillion stimulus measure is the largest federal response in history aimed at providing much-needed relief to the American people and businesses in response to the coronavirus outbreak. And whereas the CARES Act made available $5 billion in supplemental Community Development Block Grant funding for grants to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus, and an additional $4 billion in Emergency Solutions Grants to supplement the fiscal year 2019 allocations. And whereas it is the necessary, it is necessary and in the public interest, the city of Hammond, Indiana avail itself of the financial assistance provided through the CARES Act to meet the community development and homeless needs that have been exacerbated by COVID-19. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana, that the United States of America and the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development be and hereby are assured of full compliance and administration- of Civil Rights Act, Citizen Participation, Equal Opportunity, Relocation Payments, Affirmative Action, Acquisition Processes, Accounting Processes, the Hatch Act, Minimum Wage, and Minimum Hours Provisions of the Fair Labor Standard Act, and Requirements of the National Environmental Policy Act of nineteen sixty-eight. Two, the mayor of the city of Hammond, Indiana, is authorized and directed to prepare an application for one million eight hundred ninety-two thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars of C D B G and E S G funds made available to the city through the CARES Act by amending its currently adopted P Y twenty nineteen annual action plan submission to HUD. Three, the mayor of the city of Hammond is hereby authorized to execute and file such application with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to provide such additional information and to furnish such documentation as may be required of said department, and act as the authorized correspondent of the city of Hammond relating to the community development programs. Four, the mayor of the city of Hammond, Indiana is Thomas M. McDermott, Jr., and is authorized to certify that the signatures of Africa Tarver and Megan Flores are authorized to sign standard form eleven ninety-four authorized signatory card for payment voucher on letter of credit on behalf of the city of Hammond, Indiana. Five, any and all funds received under the above application shall be expended only in strict compliance with all applicable federal laws and regulations, and upon appropriation thereof of the common council. That's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carmen. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Councilman Spitali, I do have a question. I don't know if it's for you or Awana, but is this an addition to the ordinance that's, or is this like what we have to do with that once that ordinance passes?
I believe it does, but Awana, you want to answer that and go into depth if you have to?
Basically, this resolution just gives us authorization to apply for the funds that we have been awarded.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Carmen Rokoff.
On the amendment?
On the amendment, yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Raycos?
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed on the amended. Carmen Rokoff on the amended resolution.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson? Raycos?
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, the resolution twenty R ten passes nine in favor, zero opposed. Item C under resolutions.
Twenty R eleven, a resolution authorizing the Hammond Police Department to apply for a twenty twenty-one comprehensive highway injury reduction program, grant.
Sponsored by Councilman Spitali.
Mr. President, move for final passage of twenty R dash eleven?
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage of twenty R dash eleven by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Funds are allocated for the purpose of preventing highway injuries and fatalities. This consists of seat belts, drunken driving, and excessive driving. This grant does not require any matching funds in part of municipalities. The grant is requested for the amount of one hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred. The city of Hammond must complete the application in order to be awarded to get this grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kelwinski.
Thank you, Councilman Spitali. I was wondering how much they were applying for because it's not in the resolution, and I'm wondering if we need that in print.
You don't have that in your resolution, Councilman?
I don't see it. Oh, wait, I do see it.
It's about the third paragraph down.
I see it.
Five.
No, my oversight. Thank you.
No problem.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Carmen Rokoff.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Raycos?
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, the resolution twenty R eleven passes nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number eleven, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
I just would like to congratulate the entire class of twenty twenty in getting ready to mark on their new graduation, and also commend the school city of Hammond for the job well done in the midst of a pandemic, providing education for our students in the city, and a cool of teachers that have changed from being in the classroom to teaching online. They've all done well done, as well as those cafeteria workers that have on the breakfasts every day for those students.
Thank you. Is there any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Was that Councilman Raycos?
Yes. I meant to do this under communications, but I have to do that. I want to let everyone know that works for the city, especially the guys that worked in the storm this weekend. Cash Charity wants to thank the Hammond Public Works and join us at Madvix at Friday, May twenty ninth, from ten thirty to twelve thirty, for appreciation. Hot Dogger Polish launched, donated by Cash Charity, and they also have their yard signs, which are, proceeds go to charity. All proceeds go to P P Supplies for frontline workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Yes, I'd just like to apologize to Coach Roosevelt Moore for the resolution twenty R O nine. My, for some reason, I was disconnected from the meeting during the time of roll call, but I, so I was that absent vote. But I too would like to honor him and, well, deserving anybody that puts on that much time for what the kids in schools. So I, I don't know how, why I can amend that, but that would be a nine unanimous vote, but I was cut off the air, so my apologies.
I mean, can you be added as a nine to nothing vote? What's the council, I mean, is Attorney Berger in?
Yeah, that would certainly seem to me to be the right thing to do.
So just, we need the councilman, Councilman Torres wants to vote yes on twenty R O nine, which now the amended number would be nine in favor, zero opposed. Correct? Attorney Berger?
That's the way to do it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I too was thrown off the internet during the minutes, I believe, and maybe the claims. So if my vote was missing, I would vote in favor of those two.
Yeah, I had those down as nine to nothing votes.
Oh, well, that's interesting. I, okay, I do.
I could be hearing things.
I do have another item, if I might, or I can wait.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, as if enough didn't, as if enough didn't happen over the weekend, we had a car hit Dairy Bell in the fourth district. No one was hurt. One employee was under, you know, was thrown around. I saw the video. I visited there today, and that was, I believe that was, was it Saturday? It was after the rain, I believe. Anyway, I met with the owner, Nick Colleau, and discussed how to make the business safer with the installation of some kind of barriers on the front, mostly on Calumet Avenue. There is a large rock on one hundred seventy-first street. You know, the owner would like planners, et cetera, and I'm not an engineer, so I don't, I'm not gonna, you know, quibble over what kind of barrier. But if a car got through and hit the building, you know, people, even though they social distance, do stand in line for ice cream, and you know, the worst case scenario, you know, you know what that would be. It's further complicated by NDOT owns that section or runs that section of Calumet Avenue. So I called in NDOT, and they want to look at, their engineers want to look at, you know, that situation on that corner, since Calumet is primarily, I think, what needs, would need some attention. So their engineers will look at it. I also called engineering and the street department regarding something we could do, even though NDOT is involved. And I'm working with engineering to try to put up some kind of barrier. However, it's further complicated. You wouldn't think everything would be this complicated by the frozen infrastructure money, as you know, or the, you know, the district. So, but I do think because they're going to stay in business, and with all that said, it would be, it would be great to, due to the COVID virus, you know, everything's frozen, it would be great to get something, to have some kind of barrier put up, provided NDOT agrees. So that's the situation as it stands. No one was hurt, but you gotta hope nobody tries to, you know, try to run the red light or whatever they tried to do, or a medical emergency, you know, while you're driving. It's one of the few places, at least in the fourth and probably in the city, where people stand in line pre-virus to, on a normal day, you know, to get their ice cream. So that's, that's kind of what, what we're up against there with a minor point, but all part of the weekend.
Thank you, Councilman Emerson. And just to address your first thing is, my phone, obviously, my iPad didn't want to work again tonight, and my phone gets points to where words drag out, and then when it catches up, you guys all talk real fast. So if I heard something that you weren't there, I took it as it was a nine to nothing vote, that's all.
Okay, I apologize for sounding like a chipmunk.
No, no, it's really weird, because you go like and then all of a sudden it just all speeds up, so. Is there any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kelwinski.
Thank you. I feel the pain of all the people and businesses that went underwater this past week, weekend, whenever. I too have been in that same circumstance several times before spending three thousand dollars, like Marty Will goes mentioned, to get a check valve, or whatever the right term is, and haven't had that experience since. But it was a large outlay of money, and I know that this has been a torrential rain event, several of them in May, but I still can't think and wonder about how much we may have saved during this catastrophic rain or rains, if we were putting more dollars in something not so sexy, like underground work for sewers and water and separating lines. I know that the first district, and I'm pretty sure most districts have not had their full amount of gaming distribution, and so districts have not done underground work for probably eight years. And I can't think help but wonder if we had our full amount of gaming dollars per district during those eight years, how much more we could have done underground with sanitary sewer water lines. That may have saved a few houses, a few streets, or a few businesses during this catastrophic period. And I'm just asking the council to rethink and their priorities about the budget and their gaming dollars, and how much you want to keep in your district, because it takes a lot of money to spend on underground work. Nobody sees it, but what it does is help prevent some more of these flooded basements and properties. So that's just a cautionary note about what to look forward to in our next budget, when it's going to be a difficult budget, and yet clearly a priority is infrastructure that includes underground work with sewer, sanitary water lines. Thank you.
Is there any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression, the administrator's gonna have to help me out here. Does anybody have their hand up?
We have one hand up at the moment. Lori, go ahead.
Go ahead, Lori.
Sorry, gentlemen. Good evening. Lori Zollno, seventy-one forty-two Forest. Let me start by saying I'm delighted to see that you're all well. This, this, our neighborhood was without power for eight hours on Saturday as a result of the storm. Without power, our lift station on Forest Avenue could not run, so therefore it could not assist with emptying the sewers. The Little Calumet River Basin Development Commission has told me that Hammond is the only municipality in this area without permanent generators at their pump stations. The city of Hammond has told me that we have four portable generators, but to the best of my knowledge, no portable generator was brought out to the Forest Avenue pumping station on Saturday. While I understand that the, that our system was at capacity due to this rain, I would think that an operating lift station could only have been helpful. It is my understanding that the Little Calumet River Basin Development Commission would assist cost of purchasing those permanent generators for our lift, for our pumping stations. I would hope that is something that the city would look into. Again, thank you for your time. Please stay safe and well.
Thank you. Is there anybody else out there? Chris or Ray?
Mr. President, if I could speak?
Mr. Willgas, can you state your name in a chat?
Marty Willgas, district manager to Hammond Sanitary District. I just want to assure all of you that when the power was lost out at that station, we immediately had a generator there. So that station was down for a very short period of time, probably maybe less than twenty minutes, and it was up and running because we had a portable generator out there. So I just want to make it clear in the fact that during this entire storm, across the entire city of Hammond, that was the only place that we lost power, and we immediately responded. We, we have portable generators that we can take across the city, and the resident is right, we have four of them, but that's part of the, that's part of what we're doing at the district right now. We're doing a fourteen million dollar upgrade on our electrical, so that we will have two feeds coming in. So as far as the outlying pump stations, we have them well covered, and And, uh, and I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Is there any other public expression?
Councilman Dave, this is Awana.
Hi, Awana.
Hey, I have one announcement. Um, I was contacted today by the Indiana State Department of Health and they're going to be conducting a second COVID-19 drive-through test, um, testing site at Miller School. And the address is 6530, New Hampshire. It's gonna take place May 28th, 29th, and 30th from 9 to 6. They indicated that we are, the City of Hammond is the only testing site that those days in Lake County. Um, they are definitely encouraging everyone to get tested. The last thing is, once you're tested, it'll take 48 to 72 hours for them to get your results. Each individual will be contacted via text message or telephone regarding their results. And that's it.
Thank you. Um, just as a comment to that, I did receive a phone call from a guy today that, I don't know when he was tested, but he said he hadn't heard anything back. And is there a number they can call if they, if they don't get, you know, an immediate answer within the 72 hours? Do you know?
No, I don't have a number, but I can definitely get one. Um, I believe that might be the same gentleman that called, contacted the mayor's office and I'm working with Sharon Zany to get a number. So I'll make sure that he gets that number and then it's published.
Thank you. There's no other public expression? Does anybody, other entertaining motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn a meeting.
Second.
You said, you said that real fast on my, that it was like silent for 10 seconds and then it was like, I made a motion to adjourn, so. Motion's been made, seconded by, uh, by, motion's been made by Councilwoman Alexander, seconded by Councilwoman Vines to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bye, everyone.
Good morning. Bye.